Okay, good afternoon. I am calling our meeting of July 25, 2023 to order at 3:32. Roll call vote, Rosie?
Trustee Anderson?
Here.
Trustee Crane?
Here.
Trustee Wagen?
Here.
Trustee Pearson?
Here.
Trustee Murphy?
Here.
Trustee Ursulou?
Here.
Trustee Bartow?
Here.
Dr. Smith?
Here.
Great, and next we will adopt the agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Crane, seconded by trustee Wagen. Roll call vote.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Wagen?
Yes.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Ursulou?
Yes.
Trustee Bartow?
Yes.
Okay, do we have any community input items?
None.
Okay, all right. We will go to closed session in a moment. The items for closed session are 4A, conference with legal counsel, potential litigation, one case; 4B, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, one case; 4C, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, one case; 4D, conference with labor negotiator; and 4E, public employee dismissal, discipline, release, or employment. And we will, we are now going to close session at 3:33, and we will return to open session at 6:00 PM. Okay, we are calling the open session portion of our meeting for July 25, 2023 to order. And for our opening ceremonies, the time is 6:02, and for our opening ceremonies, can we please have trustee Bartow lead us in a moment of reflection and the Pledge of Allegiance? Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Next, we will adopt the minutes from the meetings in July 20, 2023, and, or June 2023 and July 17, 2023. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Okay, moved by trustee Wagen, seconded by trustee Ursulou?
Yes.
Roll call vote?
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Wagen?
Yes.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Ursulou?
Yes.
Trustee Bartow?
Yes.
Great, next we have the introduction of new staff. Is this Dr. Surr that will be introducing our new staff?
Sorry, I'm reading, reading what I'm gonna say. So we are so excited to introduce tonight three of our newest principals at our sites. And I'm gonna begin one at a time, share a little bit about them, and then they'll come up to the podium. So I'd like to first introduce Dr. Jo Urban, who will be joining us at Adams. Dr. Urban comes to us from Orange, where he was a director of innovation, but he shared that he was homesick and wanted to go back to sites. And so we're happy to have him. He's been a science teacher at magnet schools. He's raised ESPEC scores in math and English language arts. And he also has created arts programs. So we're really excited to the talent he'll bring to Adams and the talent he'll bring to our entire district. Dr. Urban?
Thank you so much. Good evening, Board President Anderson, Board members, Superintendent Smith, and members of the community. I am honored to have the opportunity to serve the Adams Elementary community as their new principal, becoming the newest Adams All-Star. Throughout my career as a prior science teacher, assistant principal, principal, and executive director, I have focused on student engagement. A prior colleague coined the phrase, "What matters to you matters." I have carried this mantra with me in each position I've had. When students are engaged and have choice at school, their interest level increases. This increase in engagement results in better attendance, increased achievement, and building of new collaborative learning skills. The key is finding what engage each student, robotics, the arts, science. I will build on the great things going on at Adams and look forward to developing collaborative relationships with the students, families, and staff of Adams Elementary. I want to thank my colleagues, my family for their support, as well as the Newport Mesa leadership team for their trust to serve the Adams community. I look forward to opening the 2023-24 school shortly. Thank you.
Next, we have our CSCA.
No, no. Two more. Sorry about that.
My apologies.
Yeah, we, we have a full, full house today. We have, we'd love to introduce someone who's been around, but it has a new position. Alice Formanek will be joining us at College Park as the new principal. We have seen Alice and her talents at Whittier, where she has served as assistant principal. She is a leader in instruction. She is a leader in building culture and supporting staff and families. And so we're very excited to bring this expertise she's built in immersion program to College Park and, and apply that there. And without further ado, Alice.
Hello. Good evening, Board members, you know, Superintendent Smith, cabinet members. Thank you for inviting me today to introduce myself. I've got a long history in Newport Mesa, as Ms. Shields was saying. I actually taught in, for, at Adams Elementary for 14 years. I just told that to Joe, in case he needs a little background, in the Estancia Zone. And then I moved to assistant principal in the Newport Harbor Zone. And now I'm gonna be given this great opportunity as a principal in the, in the Costa Mesa Zone. So I only have one more zone left to conquer. And I'm very excited for the opportunity to continue working with the students, the staff, the amazing families here in my new role. I actually met with my PTA president and vice president just this week, and we're already brainstorming and planning a bunch of great events at College Park, so look out for those for this school year. So I just wanna say thank you so much for giving me this great opportunity, and I look forward to working with you this year.
Thank you, Alice.
And the last principal? Alice, do you wanna acknowledge your family if they're in? We're gonna make this a win-win for everybody.
I just sat down and I was like, oh my gosh, my family. I was getting seconded on my work, so, just kidding. So I have my son Blake, he's seven, my daughter nine, my sister and my husband. I won't mention their names or their ages. So thank you so much for supporting me.
And thank you for supporting her, she supports the district.
We are about families, thank you. And last, but certainly not least, we're so proud to introduce Lorena Rubio, who will be the principal at Wilson. Thank you. What is so beautiful about this, and some people might not know, is she began in our district. She lived here, her career in education started here. It's really coming back full circle, and we're so excited to have her talents with us at Wilson and within the district, so without further ado.
Thank you, thank you. Good evening, Madam President Anderson and Board Trustees, Superintendent Wes Smith, sorry.
It's that night, July.
Executive Cabinet colleagues and community members and family, and my family also here. So I'm very excited, very true. I can tell you my little story, since I didn't write something, because they said to be quick, but I did start here in Newport Mesa. I started at Manavista, I don't know if you remember, so I'm gonna date myself here, but it's, it's a beautiful experience I had here. So Manavista, then they closed down, then I went to Limburg, they closed down.
Oh, wow.
Then I went to Kaiser Elementary, I went to Big Kaiser, if you remember that. And then my little, my sisters went to Woodland, which was known as Little Kaiser. So I had great experiences here. I am so glad to be back. I was in the bilingual education. I am a, I'm a success product from Newport Mesa, so it is very exciting. It is awesome to be back here to give back, and that is my way, you know, building those relationships to give back to the community. So I'm very grateful for the opportunity to be back here and make a difference. I'm very excited to be a wildcat. We are kind, I heard, and so I'm just very pumped up to see. I've already been on the campus for two days. Amazing people, there's amazing work happening at Wilson, and I'm just very excited to be part of it and bring out more amazing on it. And I do wanna thank my family for joining me here today. So I have Isabella Rubio, she is 16, a senior. And I have Elena Rubio, she is a senior at UCI. My husband, David Rubio. I have my daughter, Madeline, she is actually a preschool teacher, and she's working at this time, and she would have loved to have been here. So again, thank you for your trust, and I look forward to just having you come and visit us too. So thanks again, and have a great one.
Thank you very much. Okay, now we will do our CSCA representative, Eleanor Rebar.
Good evening, President Anderson, Cabinet, School Board members, Superintendent Smith. Stu Tedford, CCA president, and three other E-Board members, and six other classified employees are at conference in Reno this week. So that's why he could not speak. And I wanted to acknowledge item 16C7, the resignation and retirement of some classified employees. We have a nutrition services retiring after 16 years. Kathleen Hedges, confidential, after 13 years. We have a custodian after 21 years, and we have another custodian, Milt McCord, 48 years. And also Kent Ramsier, our energy manager, is retiring after 20 years. I have worked with Kent for the 20 years, and he'll be sorely missed. So that's our report. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, NMFT President Rhonda Reed.
Good evening, President Anderson, trustees, Superintendent Smith, almost had the last two, cabinet and guests here tonight. I heard many years ago, it was a warning really, the older you get, the faster time goes by. And so fast forward, in my mind, that was a true statement, because it really just seems like we were just talking about graduation. In about three weeks for certificated and two weeks for counselors, they'll be returning to start another school year. So going by too fast. We wanna thank our teachers that gave up a chunk of their summer to provide enrichment and instruction remediation for our students. This summer, a couple of the officers went to an intense CFT training conference, loads of good information. The location of the conference was right by Universal Studios. So, yes, we did go, but after the conference, but every day, the, I'm gonna say this wrong, the, I wanna call them Screen Writers, Writers Guild of America. They were out every morning and just protesting their, or striking really, and letting their voices heard, that they want a fair wage. So the last day of the conference, some of CFT and NMFT joined them, and they were so truly touched that educators would be interested and support them by walking alongside of them. So also this summer, NMFT members Tamara and I joined CFT, UTLA, our state superintendent, the Cal Labor Fed Leader, in supporting Pasadena Arts Center College with its challenge as a newly formed union to get a fair contract and really just to negotiate fairly. So we hear about, NMFT hears other unions and their challenges with their district. And it just makes us exceedingly thankful and grateful to you, President Anderson, trustees, and Superintendent Wes. We'll continue to work on our collaborative relationship. As we get closer to the start of school, we're looking forward to the exciting opportunity to welcome our new employees. So with that, I thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have community input on non-agendized item. Trustee Wagen?
This is an opportunity for the public to address the board regarding items on the closed session agenda only. Comments on closed session items are limited to...
Different script.
Different script? Excuse me about that one. Let me look. Sorry. This is the opportunity for the public to address the board regarding items not on the regular agenda meeting. Comments on non-agendied topics are limited to three minutes per comment, up to 20 minutes per topic. A speaker may not relinquish his or her time to another person by order of the Brown Act Section 54954.2. The board will take no action nor have any discussions on non-agendized items. The superintendent may provide clarifications during superintendent's comments.
Great, we have two, two out of three are former trustees. We will start with Charlene Matoye.
Good evening, President Anderson, Board, Dr. Smith, Cabinet, and guests. I'm here in my role as Personnel Commissioner and wanted to brag on our district because it's a wonderful thing when we listen to the problem and start making solutions. We have now raised our cover positions from one to seven in the classified realm. What a cover position is, it's not quite a substitute, it's more of an on-call person who can go where they're needed, and it's a full-time position, so we have them at the ready. And I wanted to give you a little update. These seven job categories are 19 positions, so that's exciting. Right now, we have four health assistant covers. All of those positions are filled. We have three instructional assistant behavior intervention positions, that was just posted, so we don't have them filled yet, fingers crossed. We have two instructional assistant early learning positions, early learning cover positions, they're filled. We have one instructional assistant special education cover, that's filled. We have three school bus drivers, that cover position was our initial covered position, all three of those are full. We have two nutrition service assistants, two, which means secondary, and those are both filled. We have four nutrition service assistant covers, one for elementary. We have none filled, but we just recently raised that position from 3.75 hours to 6.5 hours, which means benefits and a whole day's work, so we are anticipating that being filled soon. And that means we are working hard in the classified realm. Since July, we have had 51, since July 1st this year, 51 classified positions processed. 30 have been signed, sealed, and delivered, 19 are pending, and two said, "Thank you, but we're doing something else." So we know the numbers will keep coming in, and I just wanted to give you a mini report, and holding me to three minutes is amazing. Thank you very much, and I am proud of all the work that we're doing. And I made it.
Thank you. Next is Wendy Lees.
Good evening, President Anderson and members of the Newport Mesa Unified School Board, Dr. Smith. Yes, I'm former trustee, 1994, 2002. So, you know, we all, I was just doing my reports for the kids that I teach at College Hospital. And as I was doing each one, and they're all different, you know, just thinking how much I care for the patient, they're patients, so they come and go, and many times I don't see them again. So I know that you're invested and you really care about, if we're at 18,000 kids in this district. But you know, from hearing the stories, how COVID and just the isolation has affected our kids and their mental health. So I'm asking you to do whatever it takes to open the schools that are closed, like Whittier and College Park, for the community. That, whatever it takes, bless you, for a security patrol to hire them so that they drive around at night and maybe deter would-be vandals or people that are, you know, hiding out in the corridors. I just think it's really important that these, this public property that, that the community has paid for, and that it's green space, and it's got playgrounds, that rather than have it all locked up every night, that it's open. And, and it's not rocket science. If we hadn't had COVID, and, and we're seeing the downside, the effects in kids' mental health and, and I see it in my part-time job. But people have asked you before, I appreciate what you did, working with the city on Harper, to come to an agreement, at least have that, have a gate. But it's, it's not that hard to do, to find the money and to open these part, these schools for kids to play soccer. You know, the city opened the baseball field right there at Anaheim and 18th. It had been kind of closed off, and, and people said, "No, we need to open it." So please put that on your list of things to do, make it a priority. You know, use the TIC funds to find the money for the security guards. Thank you.
Next, we have Portia Fisher.
Hello, good evening, Board and President and Superintendent. This is super quick, and I'm sad that the new principal at Adams just left, but I live across the street from Adams, and when we walk our dogs in the evenings, we hear that the air conditioning is going full blast, and in fact, the unit is sometimes frozen over, and no one's there in the summer, so it feels like a really big waste of energy. I don't know if that's just something that, I know it's not really the board's job, but I was here, so I thought I would just throw that out there. If you guys could just check or tell our new principal to check that out. And I will say, in relation to Wendy Lees's comment, Adams is open in the evenings and the mornings on weekends, and it is absolutely a gift. The neighborhood uses it all the time, kids that are all different ages, and they're out there, and it's beautiful. So I would second that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we have achievement. Okay, thank you. We are gonna have Superintendent's comments next.
We don't have to.
Yeah, we're going to. Thank you.
Strike that right away. Classified coverage, again, celebrating our classified and certificated employees, both overwhelmed, understaffed in some areas, so to have that coverage is significant. Thank you to the Personnel Commission for, for doing that. I, I would just thank Wendy Lees as well for calling out mental health. There's nothing more important to our parents right now than the safety and health of their, their students, and they identify post-COVID that mental health is their number one concern. I would compliment this board for prioritizing whole student supports because it addresses mental health first. As they say in all the brain research, can't teach algebra the students going through trauma. Address the trauma, deal with the algebra. So Wendy couldn't agree more. With regard to the green space, kind of a in-the-weeds issue, but here's the good news. You know, we have agreements with our cities, we love those agreements, we work collaboratively to provide appropriate space for the community. It has to be safe, and it has to be sanitary, but we're working with the community, especially in Costa Mesa, on making that space available and doing so safely. And they've been responding, they've been helpful in that regard. We have a meeting with them this week, and so we'll, we'll lift up that same issue with them, because legally, that property is theirs when school is not in session. And I know they have an interest, as you expressed, to make that available. The city manager's been amazing, the city council's been amazing, so I, I think the future is bright in that regard. Thank you for bringing that up. And air conditioning, we'll check it. While the board really doesn't get involved in air conditioning, the person who does, I'm his boss. They're my boss. So in the end, it really does kind of work out, but I saw Jeff taking notes. We can't let it go off altogether, because then it costs too much to cool it down, but there is a sweet spot where it shouldn't be running unnecessarily. Other community members have let us know that, and we've been able to make some improvements. We'll do it again at Adams where we can, so thank you for that. And that's the end.
Thank you. And next, we'll do community input on agendized item. Clerk Wagen?
Okay, this is an opportunity for the public to address the board regarding items on the regular meeting agenda. Comments on agenda items are limited to three minutes per comment, up to 20 minutes per topic. A speaker may not relinquish his or her time to another person. Speaker cards for items on the discussion action calendar may be held until that item is considered by the board, if the speaker prefers.
We have a variety of comments, so we are going to do two minutes. We'll start with Wendy Boyd. You may do it now, or you can do it before the item, if you would choose.
Can I go after?
You can go now, or you can go when the item is on the agenda.
Yes, I'll just wait till...
Haley Jenkins?
Can I, I have two comments, so can I wait 20 items?
Two comments, I see. I only have one topic.
I have two comment cards that I gave.
I don't have a second one.
17B and 17G.
Do you want to do one of them now, or do you want to wait for both?
I'll wait till we get to the topic.
Okay. Portia Fisher?
I guess I'll wait till...
Okay. Rena Shabasta?
I'll wait.
Great. Lynn Mittel?
I'll wait.
All right. Wendy Lees? All right. Now we will do achievement. Dr. Torres?
Thank you, President Anderson. In the spirit of the ongoing commitment to ensure that we're focusing on student achievement, we bring to you tonight a presentation on the secondary instructional coach model that we have implemented. And I'd like to welcome up at this time our Director of Teaching and Learning, Keith Carmona, he's gonna be presenting to us tonight.
Good evening, President Anderson, trustees, Superintendent Smith, and Executive Cabinet. Tonight, I'm here to share with you about the wonderful work that our secondary instructional coaches are engaged in at each of our campuses. This is a program that has been in place for a number of years and continues to evolve based upon our changing needs. Currently, we have a group of highly effective teachers serving in this capacity, and we feel compelled to share with you about the good work that they're doing. So what exactly is an instructional coach? Instructional coaches are highly effective classroom teachers that support our students by providing quality instructional leadership. They exist at each of our secondary campuses and are positively influencing our teachers and students on a daily basis. The instructional coach program, its goals, and the work that these outstanding individuals do seeks to support Board Priority Number One. As you will see, our instructional coaches are developing professional development opportunities, coaching teachers, and seeking to improve instruction on their sites for the stated purpose of improving academic performance for all students and returning to and surpassing pre-pandemic-level standardized testing measures. First, I would like to share with you about the various roles that an instructional coach takes on. It is worth noting that each of these coaches have defined their roles slightly differently, tailoring their support specifically to site needs. Our instructional coaches serve as a liaison between district and school site, co-create, align professional development trainings, collaborate with school administration on coaching, instruction, leading PD... collaborate with school administration on coaching, instruction, leading PD, and building teacher capacity. They deliver PD sessions to all staff and they serve as model or exemplar teachers. Here, we have just a few pictures of our instructional coaches in action. On the left is a training taking place at Costa Mesa High School and on the right is one being conducted by T-Winkle instructional coach Jackie Washington. One of the most powerful and beneficial ways to develop teacher capacity is through facilitated collaboration. Our instructional coaches are adept at leading teachers in the process of articulating and planning out instructional units and implementing new strategies. The articulation that our instructional coaches engage in also includes conversations during the transition years, particularly from middle to high school. We also will be focusing this year on the cross-articulation between disciplines at the secondary level. Working with our teachers in a one-on-one basis is a highly effective way to impact our campuses. Because our instructional coaches have rapport with staff, they're able to leverage their trust with their colleagues to provide feedback, give insight, and support teachers in a very hands-on way. I'd like to share a few more details about the structure of our instructional coach arrangement. Each of the secondary schools have three instructional coaches. These individuals have one period during the day where they are not teaching, but they are tasked with the responsibilities I just previously mentioned. It is important to note that they are teaching most of the day. This enables them to stay fresh and current, as well as serve as a model for our staff for the instructional strategies that we're focusing on. One coach at each site does take more of a technology focus and supports our teachers with the integration of new tools. These are all very high-caliber teachers, selected by our principals through an interview process and they represent content areas across the campus. The variety is quite beneficial. As I mentioned at the beginning, we have had this model of instructional coaches in Newport Mesa for some time. Initially, the goal was to help usher in the Common Core standards and at that time, they served that purpose quite well. Once that had taken place, we made the intentional decision to move the focus of the role to a more site-specific focus where each campus was able to develop their own instructional initiatives. However, after COVID, we recognized the need to take a district-aligned approach to responding to the learning gaps that were established during the pandemic and we brought the instructional coach focus back to a district-led program, which is what I'm describing to you this evening. The main work that our instructional coaches have done during the past several years is to be the stewards of secondary education's instructional priority, eliciting and responding to student thinking. This has been our consistent instructional focus since the 21-22 school year and continues to be now. While eliciting and responding to student thinking, or ERST, as it is sometimes called, has been the focus, we have parsed it out each year. During the first year, our instructional coaches trained and coached teachers on the eliciting aspect of it, teaching and modeling strategies to increase student voice in the classroom, particularly for our at-risk students. Last year, we moved the work forward to the responding to student thinking aspect of ERST, where teachers were learning to give quality feedback to students. This year, under the umbrella of eliciting and responding, we are focusing on idea building, where we will be empowering teachers to have their students think deeply about complex topics. The decision to focus on eliciting and responding to student thinking was not selected by accident. As we've talked about since the height of the pandemic, sadly, our kids quickly discovered how to become passive learners. It became our imperative to engage our students in new and dynamic ways. Elliciting and responding to student thinking was born out of that need. So how do we do that work? Translating a district focus into intentional practice in the classroom. That's where the role of the instructional coach is critical. They are the ones helping to ensure the alignment of instructional approaches, the creation of PD sessions, and collaborating with our educational research and consultant partners. And this is all accomplished through monthly meetings where we both construct plans for the future and reflect upon our progress. In order for all of that to work, all of our teams must be working together. The Secondary Educational Services staff, led by Ms. Torres and supported by me, Dr. Shaka, work in tandem with our TOSSes and these instructional coaches, who support secondary teachers directly, who in turn positively influence our students. While I'm passionate about the work that our instructional coaches do, perhaps the best way to understand their impact is to hear from one of our own. At this time, I'd like to introduce Stevie Fuller, a math teacher and instructional coach at Costa Mesa High School, who will share from a personal perspective the value of the role and her experience as an instructional coach.
Hi, everyone. My name is Stevie Fuller, as mentioned. I'm going into my eighth year of teaching overall, my sixth year at Costa Mesa High School, and my second year as an instructional coach. Just to give you a background, six years ago when I joined this district, we were going through a piloting process in math for illustrative mathematics. That year, I went to upwards of, I don't know, six or eight pull-out days of professional development going over the curriculum. And within that curriculum are embedded instructional strategies authored by a researcher at Stanford named Jeff Swiers. A couple of years later, when the instructional coaches adopted this model of eliciting and responding to student thinking, they recruited none other than Jeff Swiers to help with those instructional practices. So having a couple of years under my belt of trying these practices in my own classroom with my own students and experiencing a lot of success, I wanted to throw my hat in the ring and become an instructional coach myself. So this past year, I've been helping the district-wide ICs bring my perspective in the classroom using these instructional strategies, working one-on-one with my Mesa staff, and also giving PD to my staff to give a more personalized experience of what I've had in the classroom with these strategies. What I've really appreciated about this model is even though we create this professional development that's district-wide, we get to bring that presentation back to our site and work with our admin to make sure that that professional development is meaningful to our specific teachers at our site, since, you know, the sites have different needs. We have a different population of students. So we've been able to tailor it to meet the needs of our students. I'm really excited. We've spent a lot of time this year working on the idea building coming up next year. I think it's going to really honor a lot of the hats that our teachers already wear without overwhelming them with a bunch of new strategies and really spending time refining the eliciting and responding to student thinking that we've already done. So, thank you.
Thank you, Stevie. It is important that we monitor our results with any program we invest in. Keeping data at the forefront of our discussions will help inform our future practices. While the work that our instructional coaches do is far-reaching, there are a few metrics that we are looking at, which I'd like to share with you this evening. This last year, our math teachers implemented a new local benchmark assessment that measures procedural fluency, conceptual understanding, and the ability to communicate mathematical thinking. Knowing that eliciting and responding to student thinking is at the core of the work that our instructional coaches do and that the ability to communicate mathematical thinking is really an extension of ERST, we wanted to see the growth over the year in that key area. As you can see from the numbers on the screen, our students' ability to communicate mathematical thinking has gone from 52% proficient to 70% proficient as measured by our locally-developed test. It is important to note that this test is not a typical math assessment. We are moving from assessments that are simply multiple choice to having students go through complex problem-solving and our benchmark is an example of that. One additional measure right now that we're examining are the results of the LPAC, the annual test that all English learners take to determine their progress towards English fluency. The LPAC is broken down into four categories, three of which directly relate to ERST, speaking, listening, and writing. As I shared earlier, a key population we seek to affect with our instructional coach model is our English learners and the in-classroom support that they receive. Our instructional coaches and ELD TOSSes have worked together to integrate their goals for English learners into the ERST PD sessions that our teachers have received. In looking at our data, the first row is the 2019-2020 school year, when most students completed the LPAC before the huge impact on the pandemic's school closures hit. Our work is to meet and surpass these levels. As you can see from the chart, we are making progress in each of these areas and have surpassed pre-COVID levels in writing. We expect the 2022-2023 data to come in soon and we will continue to examine these numbers. While we are proud of the work that our instructional coaches are doing, we are always looking to improve. This year, we will spend more time integrating the role of the instructional coaches with the secondary TOSA team that we're currently assembling. We're launching the idea-building focus of eliciting and responding and our upcoming district-wide PD Day on August 17th and then continuing that work on November 1st. We will be continuing to explore with our teachers how ERST can better support our English learners. We will be utilizing a newer resource, professional development subs, who are going to help bolster the work that the instructional coaches are doing on a day-to-day basis. And finally, we will continue to monitor data points in order to guide our next steps. Thank you very much for your attention and interest in our instructional coaching model. That concludes the presentation this evening. I'm happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions?
I guess I'll have one.
Trustee Wigan.
Not getting off that easy. So, so say, is there, what are the requirements to be an instructional coach, say? And how long are they an instructional coach? And, you know, is that something that, is there, say, a, you know, that's a process to, you know, hiring or not even hiring, but appointing a instructional coach? And how does that all go? How does that look?
So the process for hiring, for selecting the instructional coaches is done annually and is left to the principals. So in fact, today, I was speaking with one of our secondary principals who was completing that process. So the principals solicit interest from their staff in terms of teachers that they would, teachers that would be interested in taking on that role. And then the administrative team at the site goes through and conducts an interview and asks them about, you know, what assets or values that they would bring to the role. And then ultimately, it's selected by the site principal.
Got it. Awesome.
Trustee Crane.
Just a curious question is, how large are the groups when you go and instruct? Or is it a one-on-one where you observe the classroom and then you give feedback later? How's that work?
So it can work in multiple ways.
Oh, so there are different ways.
It could be on a one-on-one basis where one coach working with one teacher. Commonly, you'll see it, an instructional coach working with a group of teachers, perhaps a department. And then a lot of the work that we've done has been whole-staff work. So as, so I meet monthly with the instructional coaches and we map out all of this work that we're doing and we co-create professional developments that are aligned and they present those to staff at staff meeting days that are set out during the course of the year. So it looks different ways to serve different needs.
Trustee Rosalu.
Thank you for your presentation. I just had a question. The student outcomes slide where the ability to communicate mathematical thinking went up nearly 50% in one year, is that district-wide? Or is that from one of your site cohorts? Or is that from all students? Where?
Yeah, so thank you for that question. That is district-wide secondary, so 712 data. So what we're looking at in that slide is the progress over time for the students. So what happens is we give that assessment and then that assessment is broken down. Each of those problems kind of teases out different areas of mathematics and one of the areas that we're looking to look into is the ability to communicate mathematical thinking. So, you know, traditionally, we look at a math test and we think, okay, is it right or is it wrong? You know, we all grew up kind of getting, you know, you get seven out of 10 on a math test. But we work with a partner that goes through and analyzes the student work deeply when they take these assessments and can tease out for us the measures that you see there. But to simply answer your question, that is district-wide data.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any, oh, I have a question.
Oh, okay.
I wanted to ask about the writing for the LPAC data. I know that has traditionally been the harder area to boost. And of course, we would want that to be higher, but I'm encouraged to see it going up. What did you guys do differently this year?
Within writing? So, you know, writing is a difficult thing for a lot of our students and particularly for English learners, that's the final domain that comes along for students. The focus has been on the eliciting and responding to student thinking. So the responding, part of that student feedback is teacher feedback to students. And so there's, you know, writing conferences and there's ways that teachers engage students in a one-on-one basis. And so it's kind of, writing is the culmination of all of the, of all of the aspects of English language arts. So knowing that those numbers are not obviously as high as where, as some of the other ones, it will continue to be a focus. And part of the conversation that, or part of what you heard me say earlier is the cross-content where we're looking at how it affects all of our departments. Writing is something that should be taking place not just in an English language arts classroom. So there's a stronger focus in science classrooms, math classrooms, history, social science classrooms, so that writing becomes a priority across the school day and not just in an English language arts.
Wonderful, thank you. Oh, trustee Barto.
I'm under Ursoy Lu. So if you see Ursoy Lu come up, that's because we switched seats for today.
Oh, and have you under Barto.
Oh, that's great. Good. My question is, in regards to the writing and for English language learners, two questions. One, do we have additional strategies that we're going to employ for those students? And two, can you define what those EL students mean? I know we've got the longer ELs. There's a lot of definitions that go into that. So I want to make sure that we're helping those students for where they actually are and additionally, to provide additional strategies because it is, it is good we're improving, but that, writing is very important, especially for, at our, in the secondary level. So I'd love to see that improve.
And I'm happy to answer the question if you guys want to jump into. Okay. So I'm hearing two questions. What is the writing that we're doing or what are some of the things that we're doing? And then also, kind of what are the levels of our ELs? I'll start with the second part of that question. So when we're, when we're looking at this data and we're talking about our English learners, we're talking about the students who are currently English language learners. So once a student reclassifies, they become a reclassified English language learner. So we're really focusing on those kids that have not yet reclassified. And under that umbrella, there's multiple versions of that. So I think I heard you say something about long-term English language learners. Those are students that have been English language learners for six or more years. But also, within that category, we have what we refer to as our newcomers. Those are students that have been in the country for, you know, 12 to 24 months or less than that. And then there's a range of students between all of that. And so everything that we're trying to do to support our English learners is to support all of those students. But if you think about the variety of the students that I just mentioned, the students that have been here six years and perhaps students that have been here six months, they have very different needs. And so the work that our multilingual learner department is doing this year is to really ensure that the curriculum that's put in front of kids is appropriate for the level that they're at and ensuring that we're really implementing all of the strategies that are appropriate for each of those students. And so the additional piece, to kind of connect it back to the first part of your question, is to ensure that there's close alignment between the English language arts curriculum and the ELD curriculum. So it's not enough just to try to bolster their ELD or their language needs. We also need to provide them access to grade-level standards so that we're not just trying to remediate it, that we're still keeping a high bar. And so it's through a combination of, you know, very strong ELD curriculum, but also a focus on English language arts and the writing strategies in both that will hopefully allow us to close that gap further.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I think that's it. Yes?
All right, thank you.
And next, we have the consent calendar.
I move to adopt a consent calendar.
By trustee Crane.
Can I ask a question?
Yes. Let's get a second and then you can ask a question.
Okay, good.
Second.
The question is just in regards to, on the Isaac's Facilities Use Agreement, I just have a question on the payment of the rent, previous payments, if they've been up to date, if they've, if they've been able to make those.
Isaac generally is, pays on time, although they're a bit behind right now. They're behind March through June.
From March to June?
Yes.
Like multiple months?
Yes.
So what do we do if they continue not to pay?
Well, we, there's a number of options there. They've, they've been responsive in the past when they've gotten behind, and of course, there's always, we provide them with in lieu property taxes, so we could always withhold those as a, as a balancer.
At what point can we terminate the lease? Can we at all? I mean, is there any kind of level of recourse in that regard?
Not really for payment issues, no.
Any idea on maybe why they're not making the payments, Jeff?
It's, it's, it's just, I, I just think they, they have issues with staffing and those kinds of things. It's a staff issue. My, my surmising.
Thanks.
Okay. Any additional questions? Okay. So, it's moved by trustee Crane, seconded by trustee Wigan. Roll call vote.
Trustee Anderson.
Yes.
Trustee Crane.
Yes.
Trustee Wigan.
Yes.
Trustee Pearson.
Yes.
Trustee Ursulou.
Yes.
Trustee Barto.
Yes.
Next is our discussion action calendar, 17A. Approve the 2023-24 Declaration of Need for Fully Qualified Educators. Ms. Olson.
Thank you. Tonight, we bring forward to you, this is an annual document required by the state of a declaration of need for fully qualified educators. And what it does is it articulates the anticipated need for, in cases where we do not have people who are fully qualified. So, this document addresses three areas. It is emergency permits. We use very few of those. Most people have them coming in, so you'll see the number on that is very low. Limited assignment permits, you might look at that and say it looks a little higher than last year, and that is because the form itself has changed. So, in the past, for a limited-term assignment, we would only have to state how many we would need to use, and we usually went about 15, somewhere in there is what we would say in anticipation. Now, we have to list it by credential, subject-specific. So, just that alone, being that specific, is going to add because of the number of different types it could be. It also addresses intern, any intern permits that we would use. Again, the reason why the numbers look higher than they have been in the past is, one, the way the form is, and the second is, is that if we are 10% over what we need, we have to resubmit to the state and wait for it to be approved before we could hire someone. And 10% of two, we're talking very small numbers, and so that's why those numbers might look a little bit larger. So, we ask that the board approve our declaration.
So, moved?
Second.
Okay. Moved by trustee Crane, seconded by trustee Wigan. Roll call vote.
Trustee Anderson.
Yes.
Trustee Crane.
Yes.
Trustee Wigan.
Yes.
Trustee Pearson.
Yes.
Trustee Murphy.
Yes.
Trustee Ursulou.
Yes.
Trustee Barto.
Yes.
Next up, we have 17B. Haley Jenkins, if you'd like to make your comment now.
Hello, Superintendent Smith, President Anderson, and members of the board. Just commenting tonight on Superintendent Smith's contract extension to June 2027. Now, I know you already gave him a positive evaluation from this school year, and no doubt you'll vote 7-0 in favor of extending the contract. But I just have to ask, and I know you can't answer me, but what would a superintendent have to do to get an unfavorable evaluation? Under Superintendent Smith's time here, we've spent way more on students than almost any other local district, while test scores have continued to go down. 22% of 10th graders were meeting reading benchmarks, 22%. Yet graduation rates are still high, which is curious, and especially after I just saw what that presentation was about. Extremely expensive social-emotional learning programs have been implemented without parent approval, resulting in a legal letter from Dillon Law. Chronic absenteeism is to 25%. Gender transitions are occurring without parental knowledge. We have more admin staff under his watch while student enrollment drops. Racial disparities are continuing to grow, specifically among English learners, and our fiscal health is at the bottom. But tonight, you will vote to extend his contract to 2027. So, I know it takes a lot of courage to step out of the crowd and vote no, and it likely won't happen, but just for a moment, I want you to imagine, what would it look like if you didn't hire someone straight from Sacramento that follows all the advice of Newsom and Tony Thurman and Scott Wiener, and you took the time to research and hire a true leader? Someone that isn't just jolly and attends a lot of school events and makes funny jokes, but someone that will actually make hard choices and turn this district around? Just imagine if you gave someone that chance instead of extending failure. Please let that sit with you when you vote to extend his contract. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Okay. Moved by trustee Ursulou, seconded by trustee Pearson. Roll call vote.
Trustee Anderson.
Yes.
Trustee Crane.
Yes.
Trustee Wigan.
Yes.
Trustee Pearson.
Yes.
Trustee Murphy.
Yes.
Trustee Ursulou.
Yes.
Trustee Barto.
Yes.
Next, 17C. Adopt Resolution 010723: Education Protection Account Expenditure Determination. Mr. Trader.
In 2012, the voters approved Proposition 30, which created the Education Protection Account. We received funding in this regard, 3.8 million, and tonight, we are certifying that we use that for instructional purposes, not administration.
Okay. Thank you. Do I have a motion?
So moved?
Second.
Moved by trustee Crane, seconded by trustee Wigan. Roll call vote.
Trustee Anderson.
Yes.
Trustee Crane.
Yes.
Trustee Wigan.
Yes.
Trustee Pearson.
Yes.
Trustee Murphy.
Yes.
Trustee Ursulou.
Yes.
Trustee Barto.
Yes.
Okay. Next, we have 17D. The First Reading and Adoption of Modifications to Board Policy. Rebecca Sinclair.
Thank you so much, Superintendent Smith, President Anderson, and the Board of Trustees. Please excuse my attire right now. I am the picture of a very busy mom of four kids enjoying summer break. I think I still have sand on my sandals. But, I'm here tonight to ask you to please consider delaying the adoption of Board Policy 5020. I, in my school community, we absolutely love our school. We love our teachers, we love our principal, and I have many friends in the community who also care deeply about parental rights and transparency. And I think it's out of respect for those community members who truly care about these issues to follow the procedure of moving to a second reading, to genuinely solicit community feedback, and then going to a vote. Again, bathing suit's still on. It's a busy time of year to kind of pull out from summer break and to think clearly about parental rights and, and genuinely how the parent, teacher, administrator relationship looks like in school. And so, I think it's a rough time of year to do this, and I know you've been so responsive to my questions via email, and I thank you for that. I'd love to also provide more feedback to the policy editing committee, if given the opportunity, and I know I also have friends in my community who would love to do that as well. So, please consider it. It's out of respect for your parents. There's nothing more that we want to see than our schools succeed and for these home-school relationships to truly thrive. Thanks.
Thank you. Reina Shabasta.
Thank you for having me. I want to start with saying a thank you to trustee Barto for attempting, in her words, to push for a board policy to explicitly address making parental rights and transparency at the forefront of parent and teacher interactions, as was stated on social media on March 19th, following the media coverage of the district's secrecy policy related to gender social transitions. According to the description, quote, "It is recommended that the Board of Education accept the recommendation of the Board's policy editing team to conduct this first reading, waive the second reading, and adopt the revisions to the Policy 5020: Parent Rights and Responsibilities." However, according to ED Code, each governing board of a school district shall, shall develop jointly with parents and guardians and shall adopt a policy that outlines the manner in which parents or guardians of pupils, school staff, and pupils may share the responsibility for continuing the intellectual, physical, emotional, and social development and well-being of pupils. Please do not ignore the collaborative process and the most important role of parents in the, in the development of policy pertaining to parents' rights and responsibilities. Rights of parents must be respected, honored, and protected in our nation's great schools. I request that you defer adoption until parents jointly develop an amended Policy 5020 to align with the Chino Valley Unified School District Model California Parent Notification Policy. This policy requires educators to promptly notify parents about important facts and circumstances involving their child's health and well-being on public school campuses. The CVUSD policy has been legally vetted and approved by several respected organizations. Parents are not public enemy, they are an ally. As I begin my 24th year as a public school counselor and am a parent of two NMUSD students, I am clear on the distinction and the crucial need for parents' rights and interests for our children to be prioritized. Thank you.
Next is Haley Jenkins.
In reference to your Policy 5020: Parents' Rights and Responsibilities, I have to urge you to keep working on this. Do not vote tonight to adopt these policy amendments. This specifically discusses the rights of parents who were not even jointly involved in the development of this, like they should have been, and is required by California ED Code. And you're choosing to present this and vote on it without a second reading while many parents are out of town as it's summertime. A parent's policy without parents. Now, I want to thank, just as Reina did, trustee Barto for stating on your social media that you were going to try to push for the board policy to address making parental rights and transparency at the forefront. But this does none of that. I'm not sure where you all started with and broke it down to this final thing, but you basically could have just stayed home the last few months and done nothing, and our rights would still be the same, because your policy is just word-for-word ED Code. These rights already exist. It's like saying we have the right to send our kids to school with a backpack. Did you hear the good news? We have the right to speak to our child's teacher. This is nothing new. Parents should not be an afterthought. Their authority is essential, and in Superintendent Smith's words, he wants to make sure every child is seen, heard, valued, and safe. And this won't happen when parents are kept pushed to the side. Chino Valley Unified just passed a landmark, legally-vetted parent policy that seeks to restore trust between parents in the district and explicitly bring parents into the decision-making process in regards to children's mental health and social-emotional issues. Two board members sitting before me told me that our legal counsel airs on the side of not informing parents. So, that's a problem for all of us and will likely be for you in the future if kids are harmed by these policies. So, I urge you to go back to the drawing board, jointly work with parents on the development of a parent rights policy, and align this with something similar to Chino Valley that actually seeks to involve parents in the educational care and upbringing of their children. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Portia Fisher.
I just also would like to echo that, that I'd like you to postpone. I've been a teacher for over 30 years, and for the majority of it, I've worked at a cooperative where parents are very present and we're 100% transparent, and I love that. I never want to work in any other situation. I think it makes me a better teacher because I'm always intentional and always accountable. And I'm not asking the district to completely change and become a cooperative. My experience with my children in the district was wonderful as well, because my children were on a campus where I was welcome, and I was there, and I was a part of it, and even asked, I mean, school-side council chairman, PTA president, all of that aside, even on my daily basis, walking on the campus, the teachers engaged with me and asked me. And I know there are good teachers that still want to do that, and I know there are great parents that still want to do that. And you can't change a narrative because of a couple bad parents, just like you don't want to change it for a couple bad teachers. So, I really would ask that you go back to the drawing board, go beyond what's stated there, and put the parents first, because without the parents, you lose the good ones, and then you lose those kids. If you want to stay strong, you need us. So, that's my request. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Wendy Boyd.
Hi, my name is Wendy Boyd, and thank you for the opportunity to speak before you today. I basically want to just confirm and to support the two, three previous people that spoke tonight, and highly recommend that you take the model from Chino Valley as your, you know, one, two, to follow and to hold off on making any kind of decision tonight, and do more groundwork in, in preparation for this very important parent rights and transparency. Thank you.
Thank you. Wendy Lee.
One thing I learned when I was on the city council, it was kind of embarrassing in the hard way, I learned not to make up my mind before I listen to public comments, which you're doing right now. So, I hope none of you have made up your mind that you're going to just pass this on the first reading, because this community has a lot to say about parent rights. The proposed policy needs to clearly address parental notification of their child's request to be identified or treated as a gender other than the biological sex or gender listed on the student's birth certificate or another official record. Yes, any parent would be upset if they found out that their child is at school telling the counselor and the teacher that they want to become a different gender. I got upset at my five kids for a lot of reasons. You know, some of them were doing drugs, and I had a right to get upset. Parents have a right to get upset. However, what you're doing by not keeping parents in the loop is wrongly assuming that an upset parent is going to be abusive, not, because a parent has a right not to agree with a decision that their minor child, under 18, is making that may put them at risk for a surgery that is going to be harmful to them. And what if you'd keep it a secret from the parents and that child does commit suicide? And the school knew, you could be sued. So, it's not rocket science to add parent notification, just like Chino has done, because what they basically, if you read their policy, they give three days to notify the parent. You have that time to figure out how to approach the parent. If the parent is abusive, then as mandated reporters, your teachers, your counselors, everybody needs to file a CPS report, and that's their duty.
Thank you. Lynn Riddle.
Excuse me, I haven't put my glasses on. Good evening. I am Lynn Riddle, a resident of the city. And with due respect, I take a different view and tell this board, well done. I came to personally deliver my respect and my gratitude to the Board's Policy Committee, along with the district admins and legal counsel, that working together, you've done a masterful job, in my view, with proposed Policy 5020. I'm guessing, being thoughtful representatives of the varying areas that you represent, you began with some differing views, yet it's clear that the policy that you've articulated, coming- coming as it has through your collaborative efforts, is precisely what is needed at this moment. Your effort and policy is a model of democratic school governance. You're honorably, you've honorably compromised by keeping your principal goal, the education of all of the children of this district, as your North Star. Second, public schools, publicly-financed schools, there's a lot of turmoil of late, roiling parental fear and accusations that our public school teachers, counselors, administrators are wrongfully intruding themselves into relationships between parents and their children, that schools are taking away parental rights to direct the education of their children. But I would like to remind you that public education is not intended to teach or to encourage that children be the clones of or the chattel of their parents. No. Those, or those children, our students, are being prepared to make their own way in an increasingly complex world, as I see it. Public schools' greatest duty is to provide each child with fundamental skills to navigate, thrive, and to contribute, each in their own way, to a society that's quite different.
Thank you.
And let me just remind you, if I might, that students also-
We're out of time, I'm sorry. Excuse me, that is unacceptable. I have asked her to stop. It is unacceptable for the audience to harass or bother people at, when they're speaking. It's not okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
I have a motion. I have a motion to amend the proposed policy with some items. So for the passive language, have access, may, I would like to amend that to more affirmative language with will provide, for example, on points one, two, three, five, seven, eight, and nine.
Can you slow down, Michelle, and repeat?
I would like to amend items one, two, three, five, seven, eight, and nine, to provide more affirmative language. So instead of have access to, for example, are provided with, something that puts the responsibility on, not on the parents to search it out, but to go and have it provided to them. Additionally, I'd like to add two points, a 10 and 11, and these are from the Chino Valley policy, which you guys are welcome to look at. I printed them out if you like. You do, okay. Enough for everyone? Yeah. And they are regarding, principals, guardians, certificated staff, and school counselors shall notify the parents, guardians, in writing within three days from the date any district employee, administrator, or certificated staff becomes aware that a student is requesting to be identified or treated as a gender defined in Ed Code Section 210.7, other than the student's biological sex or gender listed on the student's birth certificate or any other official records. This includes any request by the student to use a name that differs from their legal name, or other than a commonly-recognized diminutive of the child's legal name, or to use pronouns that do not align with the student's biological sex or gender listed on the student's birth certificate or other official records, accessing segregated school programs and activities, including athletic teams and competitions, or using bathrooms or changing facilities that do not align with the student's biological sex or gender listed on the birth certificate or other official records, requesting to change any information contained in the student's official or unofficial records. Item 11, the principal, guardian, or staff shall notify the parents, guardians, of the student immediately or as soon as reasonably possible that the student has experienced any significant physical injury while on school property or participating in a school-sponsored activity. All district employees shall take every student's statement regarding suicidal intent seriously. A, whenever an employee, administrator, or certificated staff member suspects or has knowledge of a student's suicidal intentions based on the student's verbalizations or active self-harm, the employee, administrator, or staff member shall promptly notify the principal or school counselor, who shall implement district's intervention protocols as appropriate, and shall notify the parent, guardian, immediately or as soon as reasonably possible. B, when a suicide attempt or threat is known, the principal or designee shall ensure student safety by taking the following actions. One, immediately secure medical treatment and our mental health services as necessary. Two, keep the student under continuous adult supervision until the parent, guardian, and/or appropriate support agent or agency can be contacted and has the opportunity to intervene. Three, notify law enforcement and other emergency assistance if a suicidal act is being actively threatened, and remove other students from the area in the event of an active suicidal act. C, the principal or designee shall document the incident in writing, including the steps that the school took in response to the suicide attempt or threat. D, school employees shall act only with the authorization and scope of their credential or license, and employees not authorized to diagnose or treat mental illness unless specifically licensed and employed to do so. The rest of the policy would remain the same.
Before we move to questions, do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, and we can discuss.
Trustee Barto, is there a reason why we didn't get this ahead of time, so we can think about it a little more?
I had to think about it a little more.
Really? Okay.
Any additional questions or comments? Call for the question.
So moved.
No. Trustee Crane?
No.
Trustee Wagen?
Yes.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
No.
Trustee Ursul?
Nope.
Trustee Barto?
Yes.
I'd like to move to-
Did you want to make the motion?
Yep.
Trustee Murphy?
I appreciate, actually, all of your hard work on this. And I certainly appreciate, on the list, number 11, in terms of the suicidal and injury statements and spelling out policies and procedures about how that would be handled. I think that's extraordinarily important and probably better that we have it spelled out. I don't know that I've seen it anywhere necessarily else. It probably is, but I like how that part about taking care of a student who might be suicidal is written. So I would move that we add 11.
And I would second that, if we can make a motion.
The one thing that I think, too, is to discuss the items, I appreciate you doing this as well, the items, these two items specifically are more administrative regulations than they are policies. And so I think some other districts may not know the difference, but when we're giving direction as to how a school site operates and what is happening on a campus, it's a little bit different than having a policy. So we can include something around mental health, but like, all of the information that's on that page is an administrative regulation, not a policy.
Okay.
On which, on this particular-
Number 11. It goes into the second page. Where do we talk about, and where is it spelled out, that we keep and notify parents of suicidal, any kind of suicidal tendencies or anything like that?
Well, we're mandated reporters, right? I mean, teachers are mandated reporters, I think they, it's part of their-
Dr. Charles?
One of the things we could evaluate is we do have other policies that are in our Student Services Division that do address suicide. And we adopted those probably 2017, 18 school years back then. We could take a look at that and evaluate what it says on student suicides, and in particular, to your comments, a parental notification.
So just for clarification, and just to follow up on yours, is if a student has suicidal ideation and shares it with a teacher, the teacher is a mandated reporter and reports it to the administration, right? Or is there a-
So there's a practice in place when we have students who have issues at our school site, that's procedural on our campuses, that integrates both counselors, administrators, and at times, medical services, emergency response teams and things like that. If a student's in danger, safety's compromised, then Child Protective Services is a vehicle for that. But when we look at suicide response for students who are in crisis, and we've done threat assessments, we have an integrative approach, which brings those professionals together to make a decision, professionals on campus, to go forward and move forward to make sure the student's safe and isn't going to have potential self-harm. In that is parent discussion. So in that, parents are notified. The only time we would not do that is if we felt like the student was in danger of their family, and we work that out with the student. But our process right now is, parents are involved in that process, and it is done through the office, through threat assessments, to determine exactly what the needs of that student are.
And can you explain to me AR, and what that is, and how that, how these two, 10 and 11, would be more of an AR than a parental rights policy? Or anyone? Yeah.
Yeah, the administrative regulations are the small P policies and practices. How do we take the Board's Board policies and then operationalize those? And those are developed by staff with staff to make sure that we can, you know, respect the rights of all those employee groups and others that are there as we serve our students, their safety and their well-being. So administrative regulations are established by the administration to support Board policies.
I have a follow-up question to that. Do we, I know it was mentioned earlier, we actually, other boards don't do this this way, but we have a specific parental notification policy that is different than our parents' rights policy. As part of our registration that is going to be happening soon, is there something, or could there be something on there as part of the notifications, since that is our primary way of informing parents and getting consent at the beginning of each school year? Would it be possible, or do we already have something in place about mental health, about suicidal ideation?
And you're specifically speaking about suicidal ideations and mental health. I just wanted to be clear before we answer that. Dr. Jokum?
We do have a Board Policy 5141.52, and it does indicate that the parents are, shall be notified if their child has an incident in terms of suicidal ideation, or there's a crisis assessment, a risk assessment done for their child. So that is in existing Board policy right now.
How does the difference between shall and will?
That's, those terms are synonymous in policy.
In policy. Okay. Thank you.
Trustee Ursul?
I was going to answer your question, because we went off of, I think the question was, can we do more to bolster our registration packets, et cetera? And of course, of course, we can work on that as well.
Trustee Ursul?
Yeah, I think I'm going to revamp my previous, when I pressed the buzzer, I had a different comment. But now that, thank you, Dr. Jokum, for sharing that we have 5141.52. If that policy already exists, then I would like to un-support.
I know. I was like, do I take it back?
Amend.
My second. Yeah. And so I think that that's another place that I'd like to suggest that the Policy Review Committee review 5141.52 in light of the Chino Valley one, and maybe bring something like that in the future. But for tonight, for what we're doing on this policy, 5020, I want to undo my seconding of-
And I would be in support of that, too. It would be good to take a look at 5141.
We'll call for the question.
What's happening?
Do you want to amend it, or do you want to start over? I don't know if you heard me, about amending it, or we can let it fall.
We can let it fall.
Okay.
We'll just bring it back up with the next, with the next review, right? Yeah, okay.
Trustee Anderson?
We are killing, yeah, so it's a no.
So, Trustee Crane? No. Trustee Wagen?
No, because-
Yeah.
Yeah, no.
No.
Trustee Pearson?
No.
Trustee Murphy?
No.
Trustee Ursul?
No.
Trustee Barto?
No.
Okay. Do you want to make a motion on the existing?
I'll make a motion to pass the existing proposed.
Second.
Okay. Moved by Trustee Murphy, seconded by Trustee Ursul. Do we have a discussion?
I have a question, and it can kind of go in any point in this discussion, but can you talk about how the administrative regulations are developed and how Board members know when they're amended?
Yeah, once we've considered an administrative regulation and taken it out of draft form, it is adopted at the cabinet level, and then we share that with the Board officially. No administrative regulations for these have been finalized, because we're waiting to hear the Board's direction on 5020 before we move forward. So you can expect that shortly.
Trustee Crane?
I have a grammatical suggestion, number three, where it says have access to your child's school and classroom as a visitor. We should use the word the there, so we're consistent with the language that follows, instead of your child. And would you need to put, instead of child, student, or do you want to keep it as child?
I mean, it's either or. Those are small changes, so.
All right, yeah. I just think grammatically.
Okay. Does someone make, did you want to make a substitution?
Yeah, I, there was some changes that I think Trustee Barto also asked. It was one through nine that we use will or shall instead of may on some of these. Like number two, have will provide the, will, or shall examine the curriculum materials of the class or classes in which the student is enrolled. And then three, will be provided with access to your child's school and classrooms to be able to observe instruction in classroom settings and displays.
Okay. I believe our discussion had been that parents have the option to do these, rather than we're forcing them to do them, as parental rights are parental rights. So when we're asking, when we're saying words like will and shall, it's an option that people have, it's not, this isn't something necessarily we're enforcing. So it's kind of a tricky one for this specifically that we discussed.
I guess it's just, I just want to make sure that no parent is turned away from doing that, right? So that's why, if I'm looking at it, if it says may examine, is that may because they have the option, or is it may because that particular classroom does not want that to happen?
Yeah. And what is the process with teachers to understand?
Yeah, two things. A point of clarification, first and a second discussion, can't really make edits, even grammatical edits, because the motion is for as written, the policy is written. So this conversation really can't be a part of those first and the second. But to answer the question, we absolutely wouldn't deny access if there were 10 parents that day that came in, for example, to see the same classroom, the principal would say, let's do that in a different day. I think the shall is problematic in that parent shall, now you're comparing parents to go look at the policy, or to go look at the classroom. What if parents don't want to go look? What if they say, I trust what my school's doing, my kid's doing really, really well, I don't want to go in there. So shelling them, they shall do something, as opposed to, they have a right, which is what this says. Every parent in this district has a right to all of those things enumerated on that policy. That's what it says technically. And I think, with that being said, the Board has every right to let this motion fail and go back to that conversation. But what you have in front of you now is a motion and a second to approve it as written, just for a point of clarification. But I hope that, Trustee Wagen, helps with the question you were asking, though.
Yeah.
Whether or not this goes forward.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that the way it's written in this, that parents have- the option, should they choose to go in and see and, you know, observe, and, and like, I think one of our comments before, like, they were able to go in and be on campus and everything like that. I just want to make sure that that is what we're able to do for our parents.
Absolutely. It's right, parents have to be, to be there to volunteer. Again, there are certain provisions, right? If a parent has a record, so they can't be on campus, and they have no right to be there. So excluding those kinds of things, then yes, of course, to volunteer, to be in the classroom, to see what's happening there, to see the content, et cetera, enumerated in, in these items. That's right.
And I just, I wanted to make a point, because this had been raised by a few people, but this, the, we did, we did follow the California Ed Code pretty strictly, as is the role of board policy. And this is an update, this is not a first policy. So some districts don't have a parental rights and responsibilities policy. We have had one since at least 2009. That was the last time it was updated. I don't know when it was created. So the language that talks about the parents being involved in the development of the policy already happened over a decade ago. So the board, particularly our newly elected people, are representative of their community and are in this role, have the power and the authority to create and amend policy. It's different than administrative regulations. It's different than creating a brand-new policy. Every board in the state of California is in different places. Some people have policies about certain things. There was one at one point about, you know, the polls at Estancia and having notification in the community. There's things that are very different in different districts. So we are updating this policy with these proposed changes. It's not a new policy, so we don't go out and ask for feedback. The board meeting, which we have monthly, is the opportunity for parents and community members to give input and feedback. Did you have a comment, trustee Crane?
Yeah, was, they may have it before.
Oh, I, I had one, too.
Go ahead.
Yeah. No, I just, I guess my, I understand what trustee Barto and Wagen are trying to say with the shall. I get nervous about shall, meaning we'd have to send out curriculum to everybody and the expense of that, considering that you could, like, have your kid bring their books home and, and go through it all you want. So I have a problem, I think, with that shall, especially with number one, though I certainly understand your intent and, and applaud it, and, and think you're right. And I do know that, I've been on my kids' campus many, many, many times. The thing that always holds me back, I think, on the volunteering is the TV shot. I think that's what it is. It's one of those. But, um, but I always have felt very welcome on every campus my students have attended, and I have known that I can talk to my, their teachers, and certainly my son has an aide, and I get lots of access to all of their information. So I would never not agree with you on that, that how important that is. So that's my comment on that. And then I guess I'm rescinding my latest motion? Is that two failed motions?
Which one?
Is that what I'm doing now? Because we want to change the grammar on that, on that?
Yes. We can't change, we can't.
That's up to you. But if you want to change the grammar in that item, then yes, you'd have to make another motion if you agreed that that was a material change to the policy.
Yeah. Okay, so, now.
And trustee Ursulou wanted to say something?
Yeah, back to the may, shall, all the, all the words. So of the nine elements, only three of them say may. And the ones that say may are the ones that are responsibilities. The other six are rights. So those are the more, I don't know what you call them, active verbs, the, you, you know, opt out, are able, have access. So those are the ones that are your, you know, ultimate responsibilities, right? Your rights, sorry. And then the responsibilities are the ones that you may go do. You may go review it, you may do this, we just facilitate your ability to do that, but we can't mandate that in a shall, because that's your responsibility. You might not choose to use your responsibility, but your rights are concrete and in the active voice. So I think that's just the grammatical differentiation between those nine elements. But if that clarifies it for anybody.
I think that's helpful.
I have one little thing to add. I guess while we're between motions, for examining the curriculum, can I ask, and I, that we come up with a way to communicate how to get to the curriculum to parents, whether that's in the registration document that we come through when we're new parents, or something that just says, you know, we all, we all get those eight, nine, 10, 11 pages that we have to go through at registration and just.
Don't you read every word?
The first couple of years I did, and once I got to high school and different school levels, I really did, even while we were driving through, like, Lassen, and there was no cell service, and anyways. But the, it feels like we could put in a page in all of those documentations that say, here's how you access the curriculum, here's where the online links are, and if people choose not to go to them, I mean, that falls within the rights, should they choose to exercise them. But just making that a little clearer for people, I think, is, is an effort towards transparency.
Yeah.
I wanted to come back while we're having the discussion before we see where this vote lands. Drilling TV. Trustee Barto was mentioning, you know, the ARs, and I just didn't want this to get left out. I answered the technical part of the question. What I would also say, though, is, is that we work to make sure that state and federal laws are upheld, right? That student safety is above all else our priority. We've also heard from this community about their desire to be informed, and we've heard from trustees of this dais talk about that same thing. We've, we've stated here publicly in response to other public comments about our data, where we are, how we prioritize things in this district. We've said it right here. People can go back and review that. So that is informing the process. There is no, I, it was called secrecy policy? I, I searched that one, can't find it. But the AR that we're working on, related to specifically your question, trustee Barto, I think is absolutely a demonstration of listening to our public in form this process. And I think the people out there watching, and maybe some of the people in the room, will hold out their judgment until they see that, and then if they have issue, can certainly come to staff and, and tell us where, where we didn't listen. But, but a lot has been set up here over the months, a lot of commitments have been made. Those will continue to be made in that process that you asked me about.
Thank you.
Yes, trustee Crane?
Yeah, and I, and I wanted to speak to the culture of our board and our district as it relates to one of our main priorities, which is meaningful parent engagement. We, we have, we understand that parents are absolutely the part of, formula, are part of the formula of a successful student. And we welcome our parents and involve them in many ways, including, you know, if you, if you look at the enumerated rights here, where, you know, they can, they basically can have input on curriculum, they have access to review students' records, et cetera, et cetera. But not only that, we also welcome them on our campuses as far as volunteerism. We have a lot of representation in, with our ELC community and ELAC, DILAC, we have PTAs, PFOs, foundations, we have parent-student conferences, we have a robust volunteer process and, and engagement. We have school site council, we have, we have so many vehicles for parents to be involved in our schools and come on our campuses and see the good work that our kids are doing, that our students are doing, our staff is doing. So, you know, please know that we, we are, you are part of our success, and you are also part of our priorities. So there's really no intent in any way to not engage the community. And this is, this is, you know, board, this board policy is pretty solid, in my opinion. So I'm, I'm very much in favor in approving this policy as stated.
Okay, thank you.
But I think we have to deny my motion first, add the "there," and then do it again, right?
I just wanted to add one thing that you reminded me of also, that I think is important to this, and it, again, is not the same in every district. Something that was important to this board and that we added to our LCAP, which is our Local Control and Accountability Plan, is we added a fourth goal of family and community engagement. It was recommended that we make that involvement, or that we, we just include that as a wraparound in some of our other areas. This board decided that it was extremely important that we were putting money and programs and effort to family and community engagement. So I think that further bolsters what you were saying with all of the opportunities that we have for district parents to be involved in decision-making and as a part of our district programs. Did you want to make a new motion? Do you want to do a second reading? What would you like?
What, what do I?
Do you want to amend your motion?
A substitu-, I, I want to make a substitutionary motion to amend my motion.
No, but that's okay. We got it.
You need, I need your, I need Michelle's school of, of trustiness.
Yes, so for only the "there."
Mm-hmm.
Yes. Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other questions, discussions? I just, again, want to also reemphasize, we are a very diverse board, and I really respect and appreciate that we can have these conversations that in other places are not civil. I think it's really important for our community. I think it's important for making the best decisions, so thank you to all of you for that. Would you please, do roll call vote? Thank you.
Wait, Marner, is this the first reading here? Is there going to be a second?
Can, can she start?
Is there going to be a first reading, or is there going to be a second?
Yes. Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Wagen?
No.
Trustee Pearson?
No.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Ursulou?
Yes.
Trustee Barto?
No.
Thank you. And next we have informal reports. Dr. Smith?
I want to, once again, agree with our labor leaders when they presented, how many of our folks are around the district? When they say you get summers off, they've never been on one of our campuses or facilities before. We've had 4,000 students at summer school, and some of you have been around and seen our teachers, our classified staff, our, our local partners providing summer school extended learning opportunities to more students than most districts in California have, period. That's, that's the kind of work that moves a needle. In the morning, they've had core content, doing things differently, though. It's not more of the same. Students don't learn doing that over the summer, but it is around core learning. And then enrichment and engagement in the afternoon. Powerful, powerful stuff. At the secondary level, credit recovery is alive and well, and bridge programs. So at the Estancia Bridge Program, where eighth-grade students going into ninth grade, learning some of their pathways, totally, totally engaged. We've had some trustees recommend that we look at bridge programs from elementary into middle. Great idea, right? Great idea. And that's the kind of thing we can do over the summer. I just really can't thank our team enough, for everyone involved, for the exceptional learning opportunities our students are having. They're getting fed, they're being active, they're, they're, they're well, and that's because of the investment this board has made. And then, I'll share this with you, but Christie sent it over to me today. We have our summer showcases, starting, I think, July 27th. That would bring a fan, maybe something to pat your head with, and be prepared to cheer because they are amazing, and would invite you to get to as many of them in your zone or others as you can. We went last year, and besides sweating, they were amazing. They were amazing, what the kids are doing. So thank you. Kudos to everybody involved in that expanded learning in Newport Mesa Unified.
Okay. We will start at the far end with trustee Ursulou.
Nothing to report? Thank you. Other than writing policies in my spare time, no report.
Thank you. Trustee Murphy?
Not really a report, but just to echo your comments, I really appreciate our board, I appreciate working with everyone, I appreciate all of our different opinions and our ability to come together and do what's right for the kids. I know that's what we all have in our hearts, that what we want to do and make the best of. So thank you, everyone, for just a lovely discussion tonight.
I ditto that. And I also was able to go visit the summer school programs. We were able to go, trustee Crane and myself went and visited Harborview Elementary and Mariners Elementary. And what a, what an incredible program. I wanted to stay. The amount of dancing, music, Lego building that we saw going on in the classrooms was just, it was, was so much fun. I came home, and anyone who had a child in our district that didn't have their kids in summer school, I was questioning them on, why not? It was eight to, it's an eight to four o'clock program for free, and these kids are getting that socialization that they have missed during COVID, no doubt. We got to meet the new principal, Antoinette Ko, at Mariners, and she was an instant friend, and she is going to fit right into that Mariners family. I also got to go see the Fiddle Around the Roof performance at CDM, and it was amazing what these kids are doing. The district is doing such amazing stuff from when my kids were there. I ran thinking that I needed to be on this board because I needed to fix something, or I needed to step in. The education that the kids are getting now from when my kids were there is quadruple what my kids got to go through, and it is amazing. And it's because of Dr. Smith, because of our board, because of our teachers and administrations. So you need to be in our schools to see what amazing things are happening. I feel like I got to do so much, so many other things. Oh, I got to meet the CDM administration yesterday and sit down with them, and again, they are just putting together a plan that is just going to make CDM rock. It's, it's fantastic. And welcome to Dr. Kwong and Dr. Singh, I think. They were amazing, and again, they're going to fit right in, and the CDM community's going to love them. So, thank you.
I just want to make a comment on the Harper Assessment Center Park. I know that from the community, we've heard a lot about keeping that, having green space and having it open, and I do know that we've worked a lot with the community, the city council and the city manager, on trying to make sure that that park is accessible in the off-hours when the kids are not at school, and then still protecting our students when they are on campus. So I think we've come to a pretty good resolution. We do have a city liaison meeting on Friday with the City of Costa Mesa, and that should be a pretty good meeting to discuss. We all want green space in our areas, we all want people to use it, but we need to all use it respectfully and respect the space for, for our students as well. So that has come, and I believe, you know, with the good cohesive working that we have, not only as a board, so thank you for tonight's discussion. It, you know, we're, we're moving in the right direction, I believe, you know? I mean, I might have voted a different way, but I want to say thank you for the discussion, and we'll move forward.
Yeah, I want to ditto the sentiment of, of our board being cohesive, thus, in, in addition to being diverse, because we put a lot of, we, we have good discussion, but we also have different lenses, and that makes for good policy in the long run. So thank you all, again. So we know it's summer when you start seeing construction trucks and all kinds of maintenance trucks on campuses, and I live in the East Plough neighborhood, and I have seen the HVACs being, HVAC being fixed at East Plough Elementary. We had the city and the district fixing sidewalks and make, putting planters around CDM. So it's kind of exciting because, you know, when the kids aren't there, you, you do the work. So, but even, actually, when we were at Mariners, there was work being done, and I wanted to actually compliment MNO because they worked around the kids' schedule to dig the trenches, because when we went to visit, trustee Pearson and I, they were digging trenches, and then recess came, and so the, all the adults on the construction management team just kind of moved away, took a break, and then the kids took over the, the playground, and then recess was done, construction came back and, you know, it's just like clockwork. So good job, MNO. As trustee Pearson mentioned, we've been kind of each other's shadow, went to the, visited Harborview and, and Mariners. Kids are just having a great time. Kids are just having a great time. The socialization aspect of it is specifically, they are happy, they're learning, they're learning how to interact with each other and of course, the learning that's going on academically as well. For me, I was focusing on the newcomer class at Harborview. Thank you again, district, for supporting the newcomers. It's going to, really going to help the teachers, the kids and the families when they start in the fall. And we went and saw Fiddler on the Roof, which was an East Plough Community Theater. There were about 80 kids in the play, full house, three nights in a row. How exciting for kids to be engaged in learning once again. And, you know, stars are born on that stage. I know it. There was at least two. Very cute. And we went, some of us went to the State of the County at the Bubble Bay Club and we, the guest speakers were Supervisor Wagner, Foley, and CEO of Orange County, Frank Kim, I believe. And it was a good discussion. And, you know, we need to be out there and listen to what's going on, the projections, the trends, and also mingle and network. And so we were there and it was a great, a great thing for Newport Mesa to be there and engage with the community because that's part of our job. So everyone else, enjoy the rest of summer and thank you for all that you do.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, I think that I heard from our board that we would like to make sure that there is maybe a new or updated list for parental notifications as part of registration, which I think opens in two weeks. So I don't, if that would be possible, that would be excellent. I'm really excited about new principals. I think that is wonderful. I'm excited for our Astancia Zone to get some folks. And so I am very excited to get to know them more. And I've also been working on the playground use as parks. And if anyone wants to help with that process who lives in Costa Mesa and may not know, after 4:00 PM, our parks become city property. On the weekends, they become city property. On intercession breaks, summertime, when we're not using them, they become city property. And so we have been working hard with the city to remind them of that and help us create a plan, particularly for our neighborhoods that don't have any green spaces. So please send comments to our city council. That is all. Thank you very much.